Good morning, everyone. This is the 9:30 a.m. Housing Committee meeting on Friday, February 10th here in room 312. We have a number of agenda items today, so we will get started. Just as a reminder to the audience, we do have a two-minute time limit, but we'll be flexible since there's not too much testimony today, but we do want to uphold decorum and not repeat anything that's been said already. So with that, we'll move to HB 992 relating to the Affordable Home Ownership Revolving Fund, which clarifies Section 6.4 of Act 248, section laws of Hawaii 2022 as it pertains to the appropriation for the Affordable Home Ownership Revolving Fund. First up, we have HHFDC.
Good morning, Chair. Vice Chair members of the committee, Denise Matsubara, HHFDC. We stand on our testimony and support. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have Chris Sariassu from D-Bed in support. Anyone else wishing to testify? HB 992. Members, any questions, concerns? All right, moving on to HB 675. This is relating to the Hoi Housing Finance and Development Corporation. This requires HHFDC to open at minimum two application periods each year for the receipt of applications for financing for the development of affordable housing in the state from the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program, Hula May Multi-Family Revenue Bond Program, Rental Housing Revolving Fund Program, and the Dwelling Unit Revolving Fund Program. First up, we have HHFDC.
Good morning again, Denise Matsubara for HHFDC. We offer comments on this bill, but I just want to say I wish we could, too, really offer more than one financing round. But as the committee knows, we have a bond cap issue. But I think thanks to the legislature, we have an opportunity to do a second round if we get another infusion and authority to do rental housing revolving funds Tier Two. So that would be, I think, the way to go. And I'm happy to listen in to any other options. The other limitation we have really is staffing. To find people that understand LITC and private activity bond financing is a very small gene pool. So, you know, I know developers want to see an additional round if they're willing to help share, you know, their people and maybe give us some of their people to work at HHFDC. I think that would be another way to build our capacity to offer more rounds. Thank you very much, Chair.
All right, thank you. We have Stanford Carr in support, and we have Will Karen in support. Anyone else wishing to testify? HB 675. Members, any questions?
Just one.
Yep, go ahead, Vice Chair.
Denise, quick question. After the first round, is the entire bond fund used up? Is that why you guys don't do a second round, or?
Typically, that has been the case. It will stop at the bond cap, and now that the city has elected to retain their cap, we have to be a lot more mindful of the cap. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
All right, members, any other questions? All right, Singnan, we'll move on to HB 677, or six, yeah, 677 relating to the Dwelling Unit Revolving Fund. This requires HHFDC to establish a five-year dwelling unit revolving fund equity pilot, and does a few other things. First up, HHFDC.
Thank you, Chair. Denise Matsubara, HHFDC. We strongly support this DIRF equity program. It's going to be a new program, and this will be an innovative way to look at for-sale housing. There's a lot of concentration on low-income rental housing. This will be the other side of the spectrum to help for-sale housing. So we really want to see this bill go through. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify? HB 677. Members, any questions? Singnan, we'll move on to HB 679 relating to state funds. This will amend the general fund appropriation for the Hoi Housing Finance and Development Corporation in Act 236 to help the state meet its American Rescue Plan Act Maintenance of Effort Obligations. First up, we have Budget and Finance with comments. HHFDC.
Denise Matsubara again for HHFDC. This bill is so important for us to do something with the $300 million that the legislature infused into our rental housing revolving fund last year. This bill extends the lapse date so that we can deal with the MOE and the ESR. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify? This is HB 679. All right, Singnan, members, any questions? All right, we'll move on to HB 678, which clarifies the county's obligation with respect to housing developed through the housing development programs overseen by the Hoi Housing and Finance Development Corporation. First up, we have Hoi Realtors.
Hello, Chair. Vice Chair, Ms. Neop, we have the lead for CEO. Stand in support.
All right, thank you. Na'apahawai.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Happy Aloha Friday to all you all. You know, Na'apahawai, Evan Oi, on behalf of Na'apahawai, we stand in strong support of HB 678, which creates actually an affordable housing credit program for 201H projects. The intent behind this measure is to create a short-term solution for the sudden impacts caused by the rapid rise of interest rates that we've been experiencing. You know, the impacts include a significant decrease in the unit sales prices substantially due to AMI limitations rendering, you know, 201H projects nearly unfeasible for home builders. You know, furthermore, you know, with the prices coming down, construction costs have actually also been going up. And this actually may prevent projects from penciling out moving forward. So, you know, the Affordable Housing Credit creates a financeable tool to subsidize the production of affordable housing units and incentivize the creation of more units. You know, so Na'ap is in strong support of this measure in order to ensure the continued utilization of 201H. So, you know, happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Jeremy Schornstein, individual on Zoom. Is Jeremy there?
Yes, good morning. Aloha, Chair Hashimoto and committee members. My name is Jeremy Schornstein, and I submitted testimony and support of HB 678. The more than doubling of interest rates in such a short period of time has rendered the 201H program effectively unusable. And this is a program that's produced over 4,000 affordable and workforce housing units over the past five years. So HB 678 is intended to create a short-term, privately-funded subsidy to breathe life back into the 201H program so it can continue to be utilized to create more workforce and affordable housing during this high-interest-rate environment. To state clearly, the three primary benefits to the people of Hawaii are, one, no public funds required. So again, privately subsidized via the sale of affordable housing credits to market-rate housing developers. Two, the continued creation of affordable housing via 201H. And three, the front-loading of the creation of affordable housing required for market-rate housing projects. So what does that front-loading mean? These affordable units are required to be built by market-rate developers via county-level requirements. And this bill allows the decoupling of that affordable requirement from the market-rate housing project. So these affordable units can be built immediately today, and then those credits can be sold for market-rate housing developers to be used two, three, four, or five years from now, whenever they deliver their market-rate housing project. So very beneficial, one, to keep affordable housing being built, and also to build more affordable housing faster. Thank you for your time, and I respectfully encourage you to support this bill, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. HHFDC.
Thank you, Denise Matsubara for HHFDC. So we, too, as housing advocates, we really share the concern about high-interest rates and high cost. But as a practitioner in the business, we have some serious concerns. There was a recent article that came out in the Hawaii Tribune just about the management of these credits. So I think we really have to take a look. I think the concept is a good one, but we have to take a look at, are those credits that are being monetized actually producing more affordable housing? I don't know that that kind of monitoring is going on. And then that article that just came in, the Hawaii Tribune, says there's some concerns with it. So I think if the system is in place, there's careful monitoring, it's a lot more complex than just a system of monetizing the credits. We really have to take a look at this from a practitioner's point of view and see what's actually happening now in the counties that have this program before we make a decision. Thank you very much, Chair.
All right, thank you. Members, any questions? All right, Singnan, let's move on. HB 923 relating to bonds. This requires the counties with a private activity bond issuance program to exhaust their allotment before applying to the state for the state allocation. There's some other requirements and components in there as well. First up, Budget and Finance with comments. Mo Mohana, High Ridge Costa. Is Mo on Zoom? No, they have comments. HHFDC.
Denise Matsubara, HHFDC. We strongly support this measure. I think this is a second or third attempt at trying to make it a little bit more fair for the counties that do not have a bond issuing program like Kauai County and Maui County. Right now, Kauai County and the city have elected to retain their bond cap. As you know, bond cap is our limiting resource right now, and this bill attempts to make it a fair playing field for all counties. Thank you very much, Chair.
All right. No one else on the list? Anyone else wishing to testify? HB 923. Members, any questions? Rep Martin.
I have a question for Denise. One of the testifiers that submitted written testimony suggested that perhaps HHFDC, there'd be one single process for the county and the state to review projects. Or is there, do you have any comment on that?
So that's the way it was. HHFDC was the single issuer of bonds because we're the only authorized issuer in the state of LITC. But under state law, HRS 39D, the counties are allowed to take their allocation. So two counties have opted to it. That's their right, and here we are. So it takes a lot more coordination now for the developers and these projects to coordinate between HHFDC giving out the LITC, the credits, and then the city or the county issuing their bonds. Kauai was the first. Because they only have 2.5% of the bond cap, it's not a really big issue. Honolulu, and I can understand and appreciate their desire to keep their bond cap because they want to make sure more of the homes are on Oahu. So this is what we're dealt with right now, and we're trying to coordinate with the city.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Rep Martin. Members, any other questions? Singnan, let's move on to HB 925 relating to housing. This one requires that fund from the Dwelling Unit Revolving Fund be used for zero-interest loans or grants to certain buyers and aid certain existing for-sale projects that have received funds from the Dwelling Unit Revolving Fund. Also appropriate some funds. First up, we have Hoi Realtors. Okay, thank you. Na'apahawai.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair. Evan Oi, again, on behalf of Na'apahawai. You know, we stand in strong support of this measure. Na'ap always supports, you know, additional funding towards the Dwelling Unit Revolving Fund and the Rental Housing Revolving Fund. You know, these funds are critical to the development of housing. You know, particularly the zero-interest loan program established in this measure would help qualified buyers really, you know, counteract that interest rate that we are experiencing. Essentially, it creates a blended interest rate of 0% and the market rate interest rate for buyers, and it allows them to, you know, purchase units that we are trying to create. Also, you know, it does aid projects, existing projects, which are experiencing the higher cost of constructions, and just allows for additional funding to help accommodate in those increases. So, you know, happy to answer any questions again if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you. Mo Mohana, High Ridge Costa in support. Not here. HHFDC.
Thank you, Chair. Denise Matsubara, HHFDC. So I want to say I can appreciate the desire to use DIRF funds to help, but there's so many concerns with this measure. DIRF funds is created for infrastructure and preliminary and interim financing for projects to developers. The admin rules specify who the borrower is going to be, and it's going to be projects. So it's unclear as to how this bill is intended to be implemented. Part of this section pertains to developers, the other part pertains to individual home buyers. So it's quite confusing. And then the other confusion is if the intention is to apply to current DIRF loan projects because if this is a free-for-all for just any private project, it hasn't met the eligibility requirements. AMI is just one of the many requirements. We attach shared appreciation, buyback. There's a whole bunch of conditions that get attached to the deed whenever we give subsidies. So there's just a lot of confusion. I'm sorry. I mean, I want to support Na'ap, too. I think they're really important, but there's just so many concerns with the way this bill is drafted. It's hard to understand. Sorry. Thank you, Chair.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify? HB 925. Members, any questions? All right, Singnan, let's move on to HB 951. This is a majority package bill, party of the majority. This will deposit funds into the Rental Housing Revolving Fund to be used to provide grants or loans to mixed-income rental projects or units qualifying individuals and families. First up, HHFDC.
Denise Matsubara again for HHFDC. We strongly support this measure. We strongly support any kind of infusion, but especially because this body recognizes the importance of Tier Two, and this goes to finance our workforce. That's our gap income group. So I just applaud the effort and the energy it took to recognize, other than low-income housing, we need to do something for our workforce. Thank you so much, Chair.
All right, thank you. Hoi Realtors. All right, thank you. Catholic Charities of Hawaii, Betty Lou Larson in support. Na'apahawai. Thank you. And we have Mo Mohana of High Ridge Costa in support. Anyone else wishing to testify? HB 951. Members, any questions? Yes, Rep Keela. Who would you like to?
Denise, I have a question.
Denise, okay.
You should just sit right there. But so $142 million that was appropriated same year, three months, right? Is that, was from my understanding, the legislature in your testimony, right?
It took three months for us to stand up this new program, and then we awarded it out.
Where are the 760 units? Are they still being constructed, or they're pal?
Okay, so when we make an award, it takes maybe 12 to 18 months for the developer to gather their financing. Once they gather their financing, they're closed the loan, they break ground usually shortly after. All depends on the permitting, right? If they get their permit. So the construction cycle, as you know, is like a two-year cycle. It's a four-year cycle when you consider financing and construction. So that's where it's at. And technically... And technically, we don't have the money yet that the legislature appropriated. So what happened was because Hawaii took ARPA funds, and this is really a BNF response, it should be. We were subject to the ESER or the Maintenance of Effort. So to avoid having to make that additional contributions, the monies are held by BNF until the beginning of next fiscal year. So we don't have the money yet, but we can award because there's an intention to award the monies out. So the cycle will start once we get the money and we can do that. But it's a whole cycle, financing and then construction.
So we'll be able to physically see it then probably in two years, the first 760 units?
Well, two years, 12 to 18 months is just their financing, right? Developer has to pull their financing together. Then they close their loans, and then they typically can begin construction. But there's so many variables in between. Yeah, so that's the general cycle, several years.
So if the math is mathing, 300 million, that's, we're looking at 1,400 units potentially.
We did about, I want to say, close to 2,000 this past year with the money. So 760 is just for the Tier 2, but you get a lot more on the Tier 1 on a per-unit basis. So it all depends on what they come out to. There's no set formula. It all depends on how their actual costs come out. But that's based on their estimates right now.
Are you able to, I would love to see where the units are. Is that something you could send to Chair Hashimoto?
Sure.
Or the proposed project?
So we give an accounting of everything in our annual reports.
Okay.
And yeah, all our awards are posted on our website. So you get to track where things are at through an inventory list that we have on our website, and then the annual report usually prints it all out.
But we'll start with Chair, if you can, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you. And maybe that's a good interim project. Maybe we actually go through some site visits. All right, any other questions? All right, moving on. HB 1246 relating to housing. This will authorize essentially dwelling unit revolving funds, but also rental housing revolving funds as well. So it's a little bit duplicative, but this one includes the dwelling unit revolving funds. First up, HHFDC.
Obviously, strong support for this bill. It shows, you know, the House's strong support for housing. Thank you very much.
All right, Hawaii Realtors. Thank you. Catholic Charities in support. NIAP Hawaii. All right, thank you. Mo Mohana, High Ridge Costa in support. Miles Obley in support. Stanford Carr in support. Members, any anyone else wishing to testify from the public? HB 1246. Seeing none, members, any questions? Seeing none, let's move on to the last bill. We have HB 644. So this relates to the Residential Landlord-Tenant Code. It puts some parameters on how much landlord or landlord's agents can charge for an application screening fee. It caps the amount at $25, and there's some other provisions relating to what a landlord can do relating to application fees. First up, HB 644, DCA.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. Raji Tolantino, on behalf of Madam Moriarty, Office Consumer Protection. The Office supports this measure because it removes a barrier to finding a rental unit for Hawaii families, especially those of unlimited income. The cost of application fees can be costly, especially when applicants must apply to several properties in this tight housing market. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hawaii Realtors. All right, thank you. Partners in Care. Lartilin Bob Ortlo in support. Legal Aid Society. Dan, welcome, Dan.
Good morning. Thank you, Chair Hashimoto and members. My name's Dan Omara. I'm the Managing Attorney at the Legal Aid Society of Hawaii. I manage a unit that does housing. We also oversee, and I oversee, the HUD Fair Housing Grant. So for the whole state. So we are tasked with providing advocacy for people who've been discriminated against. We also provide technical assistance to housing professionals who otherwise don't have access to fair housing information. So our testimony speaks for itself. I wanted to clarify or add on a couple of things. One is it was a little disconcerting that there was testimony that said that this fee was required to be charged to everybody because of fair housing. It's just, I guess the best word is it's wrong. It's just not required. It's not a fair housing requirement whatsoever. And there's no reason in fair housing to, it doesn't impact how much you charge to screen tenants. In fact, you know, it could be the reverse. If you don't do it right, you know, how do you, do you charge a member of a particular national origin a higher fee, and it discourages them versus a lower fee? I mean, there's all sorts of ways it can be mitigated, but if it's capped, everybody knows what it is going in. The other part is, I think, and if that is really the reasons why I think the Realtor Association is against it because they think fair housing requires it, then they should reach out to legal aid for technical assistance because it would be unfortunate if they think that fair housing has anything to do with this. When you're talking about this fee cap, you have landlords, and I know it's a cost, right? There's no doubt about the cost of being borne by the tenant and by the landlord. But the landlord has to already think about their property taxes, their GE taxes, their dues of AOA or whatever, management fees, maintenance and vacancy rates. So when you're talking about a $25 fee, investing in a very significant investment for themselves, a real property, the $25 fee, if that's the number agreed upon, is, it's just worth the investment for a landlord to take whatever measures they want. Review somebody. We don't have, there's no issue whatsoever with how much a landlord reviews a tenant. As long as it's prudent business, sound practices, and not used for discrimination, that's not a problem. It's just that the $25 cap or whatever cap is agreed upon really does impact how people go about it. We see it every day where people struggle to get the first month's rent, second, you know, first month's rent, security deposit, but then they have to go through, and we see it particularly with our low-income population of families who have to go through multiple, multiple applications because it's just hard to find a family house. And so when you're shelling out $100, $150 per application, pretty soon, you're just eating into that cost that people have. And so we're very supportive of this, and we hope it's not derailed by some implication that it's required by fair housing, which it just simply isn't. That's it, thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Okay.
Kevin Carney, Affordable Housing Connections LLC with comments. Anyone else wishing to testify? HB 644. Members, any questions?
Question.
Vice Chair.
Few questions for legal aid.
Legal aid, Dan, come on up.
So is there, is it an application fee separate from a screening fee? Or is it all combined in the same thing?
I think generally speaking, a single fee is what people pay for whatever it is. Some landlords, you know, they, I think there's reference to criminal background checks and public records checks, eviction checks, credit checks. Some landlords do that, some don't. Some, you know, base it on whatever they base it on. So generally, it's just a single fee when you apply for whatever we call it, screening application.
Okay, so for the landlord to like process applications, the landlord, that's prohibited, landlords to charge that? Even if it has nothing to do with screening or?
Wouldn't make any sense for him to do that. I mean, that's just part of just having to function and taking an application. So no, we're not, I'm not aware that people actually just charge like an administrative fee to say, you're handing me this piece of paper. I'm going to charge $25 to process it.
Okay, and then how many of these, do you, how many of these complaints are, would you, you say you process in a year from tenants?
In general, I mean, we're extremely active in fair housing and landlord tenants. So we're in the 2,000 to 3,000 range in that.
I'm talking about specifically a tenant comes in and says, you know, my landlord charged me this $50 fee, and they didn't even?
I'll tell you, it's more insidious than that. Because we don't necessarily see that exactly because what we see is, what we typically see is a Section 8 voucher holder who is telling us how hard it is to find a place. And we have many of them who've told us, you know, I've kind of had to stop for a little bit because I don't have the resources to make more application fees. And we've had that several times. And we have the, because they then also have to figure out how to get the security deposit too, and, you know, pay their first month's rent. And they might, their first month's rent might be minimal because it's subsidized, but they still have to pay the security deposit. I don't know if that made sense if that was responsive.
Yes, and I guess my last question is, is that the provision D, paragraph D talks about the landlord returning the fee, the unused portion of the fee. Is there anything that prevents a landlord from saying, hey, I'm charging $100 for the fee, I need it upfront? And then, you know, if it's only $8, I'll give you the $96 or the $94 back on the backend? And then weeding that people out that way with, you know, making the fee really high?
Well, absolutely, that would be, absolutely, and, yes. And that gets to, yeah, that's absolutely a risk, right? And that's, and that's part of, and that, what you're addressing too is the multiple fee part, right? So there's nothing that requires a landlord to, if they, they could take 15 applications at $100 apiece, right? And so, and those people, they never see that money, and they never get it. There's also one other thing I think I'd point out, and I want to make sure it was clear, is that this information is about, if you're the applicant, the information is about you. So you are entitled to your own information. So the notion that it's confidential, well, sure, it's confidential because a property manager should keep it confidential, not spread it around. But if you, the person who is the subject of it, wants to see it, they should absolutely see it. Now, we see that happen often where people get a denial, and then they're trying to find out why. And it literally has taken us months to get through that process just to get a copy of what the report was that got them. And then we find out there's mistakes, or they're basing on something that's out of date or whatnot, and they didn't have access. By that time, it's too late. You know, they've been harmed by not having access to this report, and they don't have a way to get it. This bill does address that, so, which is a, you know, big benefit.
Okay, okay, thank you, Chair.
All right, members, any other questions? All right, seeing none. All right, we're going to recess for decision-making. Calling the meeting of 9:30, hearing back to order. We're moving into decision-making. Thank you, everyone, for your testimony. We've reviewed all the testimony, and we appreciate those who came in person and gave verbal testimony. First up, we have 992 relating to the Affordable Home Ownership Revolving Fund. So this is essentially a cleanup bill to make some clarifying amendments for the previous appropriation that was made. You know, so we took out a section there that I think we want to make sure that it's clear that it's for this purpose. So we're actually going to, the section that we deleted, we're going to put that in the preamble. And that section is, it's going to say, "The purpose of providing in whole or in part loans to nonprofit community development financial institutions and nonprofit housing development financial institutions and nonprofit housing development organizations for the development of affordable homeownership housing projects." So, you know, I think we just, what we did in the bill was we took this out, just put it, we said, refer to Section 201 H206, which says that. But I think we want to make abundantly clear that the nonprofits should have access to this. "We're going to defect the effective date to June 30, 3,000, and allow staff for, to make technical and non-substantive revisions." Members, any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Members voting on HB 992, Chair likes to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Keela.
Aye.
Representative Kitagawa.
Aye.
Representative Martin.
Aye.
Representative Onishi, excuse. Representative Todd.
Aye.
Representative Matsumoto.
Aye.
Chair, your measures adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to HB 675 relating to the Hawaii Housing Finance and Development Corporation. This is a bill to really incentivize the counties, specifically city and county of Honolulu, and we'll call them out, to come back and give the state their bond allocation. And so I think part of it, this is one bill, there's another bond cap cleanup. But at least if we start to show that we're opening up another application period, it shows that we're trying to take their concerns into consideration. I think previously, the city has said we go too slow. So we want to show, well, we'll open it up, and we'll try. So we're going to add in an amendment to incentivize the counties to, and to take into consideration HHFDC's testimony. We'll add in, they should do a second round if sufficient financing is available. "We'll defect the effective date to June 30, 3,000, and allow staff to make technical and non-substantive revisions." Members, any questions, concerns? Vice Chair for the vote.
Members, voting on HB 675, noting the present fall members accept the excuse absence of Representative Onishi. Are there any members voting no? Are there any members voting with reservations? Chair, your measures adopted.
All right, moving on to HB 677 relating to the Dwelling Unit Revolving Fund. This is what we're calling the DIRF Equity Program. We think it's a, should be, it's a pilot program, so there is a sunset on this. We're going to see how it works. And if it works well, then hopefully we can, you know, make sure that it's a part of HHFDC for a little longer, but we want to test it out. So we're going to blank out the appropriation, defect the effective date to June 30, 3,000, and allow staff to make technical and non-substantive revisions. Members, any questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Members voting on HB 677, Chair likes to pass with amendments. Noting the excuse absence of Representative Onishi. Are there any members voting no? Are there any members voting with reservations? Seeing none, Chair, your measures adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to HB 679 relating to state funds. This more in general is a housekeeping item to comply with the Maintenance of Efforts. So we're going to just move this out as is. Members, any questions, concerns? Vice Chair for the vote.
Members voting on HB 679, Chair likes to pass with amendments.
As is.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. Chair likes to pass as is. Thank you. And noting the excuse absence of Representative Onishi. Are there any members voting no? Are there any members voting with reservations? Seeing none, Chair, your measures adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to HB 678 relating to housing. So this is the credits for 201H projects. So I think what we'll do is we, I do take into consideration what HHFDC said. So we're going to put into the committee report that additional guardrails are needed to ensure that credits are properly issued, controlled, and accounted for. I think that's very important. We'll have to take a look at more into this, so hopefully we can figure something out. But we'll keep it moving in for now. We'll add in NIAP's amendments to include the Hawaii Community Development Authority into the definition of affordable housing obligation. And we'll take down the sunset from 2031, and we'll just give it, we'll allow this program to go for five years to see if this will actually help with the 201H program. "We'll defect the effective date to June 30, 3,000, and allow staff to make technical and non-substantive revisions." Members, any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Members voting on HB 678, Chair likes to pass with amendments. Noting that Representative Onishi is still excused. Are there any members voting no? Are there any members voting with reservations? Chair, your measures adopted.
Thank you. HB 923 relating to bonds. So this is the second bill to incentivize the counties to kind of fix this bond cap issue. We're going to add in the budget and finance amendments, which adds in a provision of reporting to HHFDC in a different portion of 39B4. So we'll take it from one place in So, we'll take it from one place and put it into another place, so, um, at least, uh, HHFDC will know how much, uh, bond cap they'll be getting back from the counties in any given year. Um, I think that's very important so that they can plan to figure out how much money they need to issue during their, um, application period. We'll defect the effective date to June thirty-three thousand and allow staff to make technical and non-substantive revisions. Members, any questions, comments, concerns? Vice Chair for the vote.
Members, voting on HB nine-two-three, Chair likes to pass with amendments, noting that Representative Onishi is still excused. Are there any members voting no? With reservations? Chair, your measures adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to HB nine-two-five relating to housing. So, I was taking a look at this bill, and I was trying to figure out how we could incorporate some of HHFDC's concerns, but I think we need to talk more about this. So, uh, I'm going to recommend that we, we have this as a discussion point in the YIMBY Working Group to tackle this, um, and it'll, it'll be an interim project for us, so we'll, we'll defer HB nine-two-five for now. Moving on to HB nine-five-one. So, this one is our Majority Package Bill. This essentially allocates three hundred million for the Rental Housing Revolving Fund, one hundred fifty million for what we're calling Tier Two, which is sixty percent to a hundred percent AMI housing, and a hundred fifty percent, a hundred fifty million for sixty percent AMI and below. So, since it's a majority package, we're going to move this out as is. By, any questions, concerns, comments? Vice Chair for the vote.
Members, voting on HB nine-five-one, Chair likes to pass as is, noting that Representative Onishi is still excused. Are there any members voting no with reservations? Chair, your measures adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to HB twelve forty-six relating to housing. So, this is going to be our Dwelling Unit Revolving Fund vehicle. Uh, so the last one was the Rental Housing Revolving Fund vehicle. So, in order for this to be our vehicle, we're going to remove the sections that relate to the Rental Housing Revolving Fund. So, we're going to delete Sections three, four, five, six, and seven. So, those are all the sections that are in HB nine-five-one, which is going to be a Rental Housing Revolving Fund vehicle. Uh, but we'll leave the Dwelling Unit Revolving Fund, um, there. We're going to blank out the appropriation of sixty-five million, but add in the committee report that HHFDC has, uh, proposed sixty-five million dollars worth of proposed projects for twenty-three to twenty-four. And I also want to add in another provision that the University of Hawaii West Oahu has a possibility of using thirty million in DIRF for the purposes of developing approximately five hundred units if onsite infrastructure is funded through DIRF. Um, it was also brought to my attention that in Section two-one-H dash seventy-one, seventy-two, and one ninety-one point five, um, we want to make sure that we make it abundantly clear that HHFDC may issue bonds for infrastructure projects relating to housing and issue revenue bonds for regional state infrastructure projects. Um, therefore, we're going to add, um, some clarifying language to make this clear because, you know, for bonds, we want, especially revenue bonds, it's a critical component of housing projects and can go a long way in adding more housing stock and leverage any of our cash infusion. So, we're going to make those technical amendments, um, in, in, to, in, to make sure that the infrastructure portion is very clear and the revenue bonds are very clear. Um, we're going to defect the effective date to June thirtieth, three thousand, and allow staff to make technical and non-substantive revisions. Members, any questions, concerns, comments? All right, Vice Chair for the vote.
Members voting on HB twelve forty-six, Chair likes to pass with amendments, noting that Representative Onishi is still excused. Are there any members voting no with reservations? Chair, your measures adopted.
All right, last bill, HB six forty-four relating to the Residential Landlord-Tenant Code. So, staff should have passed out a proposed draft with, um, our proposed amendment. So, for those who watch this issue pretty closely, this is actually the amendments that we proposed to the Senate during conference that Rep. Kitagawa, myself, and Rep. Nakamura made, uh, back in, in conference last year. The Senate rejected it because I think we just sprung it on them and told them, take it or leave it, and they, they left it. And so, we, our commitment was to bring it back, and we would add in those amendments. So, essentially what it does, it does remove the twenty-five-dollar proposed cap. I think it is very problematic when we put a dollar amount in HRS because then we're going to have to come back and change it, um, as, as costs rise. But it's still going to require, upon request by the applicant, the landlord or agent shall provide the applicant a receipt of payment of the application screening fee. And we're going to add in that a breakdown of costs, uh, costs covered by the screening fee must be disclosed upon request. It still requires that the landlord's agent shall return to the applicant any amount of the application screening fee that is not used for the purposes authorized within thirty days after the landlord has submitted the screening request. So, we believe this is important because, um, in, in conjunction with the first, well, the, the previous, uh, section, they must, they, they should only be charging what it costs them. So, I think that takes care of the twenty-five-dollar fee because if you charge any more than what it actually costs, you're going to have to reimburse them. So, if you're a smart landlord to minimize administrative burdens, you just will charge what it costs. Um, we're going to add in a requirement that an agent may only charge application screening fees for applicants over the age of eighteen whose income is being used to meet financial qualifications for the rental. And so, we think that hopefully will slow, you know, kind of cut out some excessive screening fees. Uh, and, and also, you know, I think most people, although they're doing some, I think most of it is financial screening fees for, for those who are eighteen because we want to make sure they're financially qualified. We're going to add in a requirement that DCCA shall produce informational materials and make that available regarding the rights obligations pursuant to this act, and amend Section One, um, takes effect on May first, twenty-twenty-four to allow for the educational piece to be publicized before this program goes, um, full-blown. So, well, for now, we'll defect the effective date to June thirtieth, three thousand, and allow staff to make technical and non-substantive revisions. With that, members, any questions, comments, concerns? Want to thank Rep. Kitagawa for her work on this last year. Vice Chair.
I just want to express the same comment that I don't want landlords charging an exorbitant fee upfront and then to intentionally weed out applicants and then refund the fee on the backend, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Chair.
Members, any other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Members voting on HB six-four-four, Chair likes to pass with amendments, noting that Representative Onishi is still excused. Are there any members voting no with reservations? Seeing none, Chair, your measures adopted.
Thank you, members. That concludes our agenda for today. I do want to give you a friendly reminder, we will be convening in Conference Room three-two-nine at eleven fifteen to tackle more bills. Uh, it's a joint with the Health Committee, so we'll see you at eleven fifteen, and for now, we're adjourned.